Follow up with that company and see what.
Okay. All right, our next thing we have, I'm gonna turn it over to Sandra.
Okay. So, we have Enrique Cabrera, if you want to step up. This is something that came up to me, I met this great artist at a dinner and we came with this idea of for him to be the first of many to put an art installation, beautiful sculpture, in the village lawn, village hall lawn, so we're here just to hear a presentation of who he is. And we should make a decision as a board if we wanna start something like this and maybe he'll be the first of many artists. He's a local artist, he has been, his art has been all over the world. It would be a great exposure for the village of East Hampton, of course, for his art. And also, I think, the first of many, if we agreed upon this. We just have to, Enrique, you wanna talk a little bit about your art?
Yeah, can you step up? Does LTV have any of his art loaded from the agenda?
I do not.
No? Okay.
Okay, thank you so much for the invitation, Mayor Sandra. My intention is, in all my projects, I worked with for twenty years, twenty-five years, and I am restored a sculpture. I make a many exposition in the, in the world. Now, my most important project, put in Cinco de Mayo in New York, and the most important points in Meatpacking District. El Toro de Oro is the name, El Toro de Oro, it's a big sculpture in bronze lingot, which represented the force with the new generation in the world. Fusion with the Meatpacking District, the old village district, the meat, the bull, new modern bull, in the top, the butcher block. And, I can't, okay, sorry. And, one week after the unveiling, El Toro de Oro, in the press, WordPress, three hundred five, three hundred fifty-five millions impression in the world. One month after one point two billions, okay? Now, four point two, four point two billions, four two point billions. It's crazy. What happened with this thing, the Forbes, New York Times, New York Post, all press in the world speak with the bull? I remember the Forbes, the watch out, the World Street Bull, the new bull, the, no? I, I think it's good option for, for East Hampton, I live in Bridgehampton, okay? Coming soon, come to East Hampton. I love East Hampton, I have many opportunities for put my bull. But, this village is signature, for what? For it's in the middle, the all, all people come to Montauk, all Long Island, it's a specific place, no? And, and I happy for the, the relation with Sandra, with the mayor in the last one month, yes? I think it's good opportunity for all local artists, for take the, take option for the, the, ma- many artists in the world, many artists in, in, in local artists, no? But the artists, I need, they won't push it for, for, for see, oh, it's, it's, it's good option, put my art. And los artistas necesitan ver, no?
The artists need to see everything that.
Yes. And El Toro, El Toro is a great piece, it's, it's.
I have a picture if you wanna see it.
No pueden verlo?
Yes, please.
Yes, sorry. And my intention is put the, this piece, the piece is here in, in Bridgehampton. The unveiling of this piece is in the art fair, Hampton's final fair, is, is the signature with the fur, the bull. It's a big piece, same the middle of the table, height seven feet, weight seven feet, and long sixteen feet, no? It's stainless steel, the name is the Platinum Bull, is the big brother with the El Toro de Oro in New York. Two weeks ago, I go to the most important auction in Capri with UNICEF. I am ambassador in UNICEF, ambassador in Rome, ambassador in ANFA, okay? The next week, go to ANFA for put auction the small bull. I put all money in the, in the auction, six hundred twenty-five thousand euros this size, okay? I told with Sandra, why not, for the next year, mega one, Molina, como se dice Molina?
Wembley.
Wembley, yes. And put for gift, for the village, okay? It's, it's good for the, the, the kids. And one new design in stainless steel where the kids can access and the, and the. Se pueden meter al molino, no? Sorry for my English.
It's all good. So, one of the things that I was also talking to you is that this is not gonna cost a penny to any of the village tax residents. Enrique is willing to put in the art, it's just gonna be temporary, it's gonna be a month, two month. And it's, he's carrying all the costs of moving the bull to the place where it decide to put it. So, I think we just should see the board is in agreement to put it.
The village no need pay nothing, the bull is here, I have my team, I have my, I need a big crane for move it, the logistic. Only, only, only I need close the street for half hour for the, the, the bull. And.
Jody, do you have a, do you have a photo of the, of the bull? Perfect, thank you.
No, this is the, this is the bull, the Meatpacking District bull.
That's the one in the Meatpacking District?
Yes, it's in the Meatpacking, ah, it's, it's important, with the neighbor in Meatpacking. When I start this project, the neighbor told, oh Enrique, only, only you can opportunity to put your artwork for one week. Okay? When you need more time, you need this. Okay, permits, insurance, many things, no structural, okay, I work in this thing. I work, okay Enrique, it's, it's good, you can put the bull for one month, okay? Four months, six months, okay, this. Okay, no problem, no? I work, I ready, I make all things, all structural plans, todo, okay? Okay, make the, the, the most important day for unveiling, okay, Cinco de Mayo. All exposition is important, I have a one start unveiling, a one finish the exposition, okay? In Meatpacking, start, and Cinco de Mayo, finish in Labor Day, okay? Now, I ha- I have many options for the president in Madrid, Spain. Enrique, please, take your bull, put here, for the, it's a great, great. You take in Google, El Toro de Oro, New York, my bull first, and the World Street Bull, abajo. It's crazy, no? You, you, you check, no?
I don't know if they have the, the.
Jody, do you have the other bull?
It's in the package.
Uh, it could take me a sec to bring it up.
Okay. Yeah, it's in the packet, that.
It's in the packet.
Okay, give me one sec.
It's been this morning, it's super important, the most important platforms with art in a, in the world, the most important is Artsy, okay, Artsy is, no Mickey Mouse, Artsy is real, real art, no? And when, Artsy normally speak with the art pieces, never speak with the artists. In the last three months, Artsy make three articles with me, with the, the great explosion in the world, the, I am the first artist, Latin, Mexican, mega one exposition in the Louvre, in the Louvre, Paris, and Antipico Picasso. The unique artist mega one exposition in the Chertosa de San Jacomo, is the big old monastery. And make exposition, and plus, put in auction, and plus, sort of in six hundred twenty-five thousand this size. And now, I work with the, my bull, the last edition, all my edition, I make seven pieces. The last piece, put in ANFA, I work with the ANFA for sort of one point, one point four, okay? And I think it's good exposition, put the bull here, for the world, speak with the bull. Many people, I know, ah, East Hampton, yes, in Long Island, a little town, blah, the mayor is good, eh, then, okay? But.
You're right about that, yeah.
Well, the people, but many people know, know, where is East Hampton? Ah, okay, create a connection with the El Toro de Oro, with, with the, my, my art, it's, it's, it's a good opportunity working together, no? For many people see, where is East Hampton? Ah, okay, it's, it's Hampton is when put the El Toro, the same place in New York. Ah, okay, many people come to see the bull, no, it's, it's, I think it's good, good opportunity for together, no?
So, if, if the board decides they want to do this, what, what are you thinking as far as when and how long?
Okay, when, now I have the bull in the, ah, no. It's in the park in my truck. Only, no need, no, I discovered the parking for taking my bull in the, no? Okay, I told with Sandra, this, this moment is good moment around this week, where the many success in the village. Tomorrow is the gala, it's, it's close the Labor Day, no? The bull is here, the bull is in my house, no, now the bull is in Southampton Polo Club af- after the.
You can see it on the screen there.
And the art fair. After the, the, the presentation and, and the art fair.
Yeah, go ahead, Jody, if you can put it up.
Yes.
Can you guys see that?
Yes.
It's only the bull, no.
Not you, you don't come with it.
No, no, not me. Yes, yeah, it's, it's. You see the piece in life, it's.
Does it come on the platform or does it come like that?
It's, it's the platinum, only.
Yeah, the platform?
No, does it stay on that platform or is it just standing?
It's the, the, sorry, the, it's in the platform.
Okay.
With the, the history is in the top with the platform, it's a, it's, it's, no, it's in the platform, it's put in my, my house. But the piece is in the platform. But, ah, okay, the platform, I have a lights, solar, solar system. And the night is, wow, it's amazing, view, all people is super happy with the bull, oh my God, it's a show, it's big show, no? And the people, I have the connection with the, with the New York Meatpacking District. And the unveiling, the mayor Eric Adams go to for the unveiling, the embassy with Mexico, embassy the USA, director of the cultura in New York. It's a, a lot of work for the unveiling of El Toro de Oro. And, I don't know, maybe, eh. Put the bull soon, and the, eh, two months, three months, and you see, what is the, the, the people, oh, I love the bull, okay, oh. No, I like the bull, okay, no problem, no?
Okay. And, so, so a minimum of two months would be what you would like to say.
I think it's good.
I mean, if people love it, we could keep it longer, but if it's not so liked.
Yes, the people love it, eh. No sé.
So, we have to vote?
Well, we have to talk about.
What, can I, can I ask?
Yes, yes.
Is it on public or private property in New York?
The public.
Public property, and what was the process for them to select you to put that on that property?
Okay, I make a one propose with the, with the neighbor. It's crazy work for one year, okay? But in the middle with the Meatpacking, the bull, is Rolex, Hermes, Gucci, Prada, Lucy, Tesla, the most important brands. And, okay, I paid three millions a year for my space, for what this guy only put your bull for free, no? It's a, a many meetings for accept, accept my bull. And I create a great expectation with my bull, a great project with the neighbor, the butcher block, the history, the new bull, and the metal with, it's all, the neighbor in Meatpacking is many old bronze metals, no? The, the board, Meatpacking, super happy, okay? For, for, the board is perfect, only I need send the presentation with the owners, with the directors, with the brands. All directors, all people, super happy for the, the situation in the unveiling in Cinco de Mayo. And the festival flowers, three point seven millions, people's walk, people walking around with the bull. Exactly, and the restoration hardware New York, Meatpacking, you know? In the middle of the street. And no, no, eh, private property, it's public.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I think trustee Doyle is, is just referring to, is there any problem, Vinnie, with only offering this to one person as opposed to putting it out like a.
Been before, have there been other artists in that area before, are you the first that was in the?
I am the first artist in the history in Meatpacking put a one public art.
And they, and did you have to get approval from all the stores around?
Yes, yes.
So, all the store owners approved it, and then, did New York City approved it, or?
I, I need, I, I show you what, I, I, I create that one great effort with the whole process.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, we're not putting it in from the sidewalk or anything, yeah. Village property is not necessarily public property.
This is the, the unveiling and the processes with New York's, New York.
Okay.
Dot art. Yes, it's a, the same company made the premises for great building on the floors, it's the same company with all of my permits for my work.
Okay.
All right, so, does anybody, I guess, it's really gonna come down to the board needs to discuss it? So, does the board have any questions for Enrique before he leaves? And then we can discuss.
The lights are aimed at the ball.
It's around the, the ball in the butcher block.
Okay, is it possible disconnect, just in case, we do have legislation, dark skies, just wanna make sure that we can.
It's.
Si, si, se puede conectar las luces, en si alguien, este, dice, no son muy bright, pero.
No, no, es solamente es una luz, como marca la silueta del toro.
It's a, a shed light that marks.
Si, si, it's super subtle, yes.
Super soft.
No, it's, no, 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 it's.
Not a bright light.
No, 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 no. It's, no, no.
It's a, it's, it has solar power lights that lit up the silhouette of the bull, soft lighting, not a bright light.
Which can be shut off.
And, se puede apagar, ¿verdad?
Si, solo se, las quito.
Yeah, he can take them off if it bothers anybody.
See, I think.
Is this something that, sorry, is this, I mean, you were saying it brought millions of people in, is this something that if it were in East Hampton, people would be coming to, to park and get out and look at, or is it something?
Ayuda, Sandra.
Like, is it?
Si, it's an attraction.
Is it an attraction that people are going to come, park their car, go look at the bull?
Si es algo que la gente va a venir y parquear el vehículo y bajarse y ver el, el toro, o si es algo que, este, la gente va a pasar por ahí y entonces van a caminar, lo que sea. Si va, va a traer gente de todos sitios.
Claro, okay, when make, when Artsy make article, okay, I put the bull, I, I have my press list to send you for the newspaper. And, eh, and many newspaper, I create a great story, the watch out, the new platinum bull, eh, and.
Yeah, and a big shield.
And it's Hampton for exposition, eh, blah, 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 blah. No, 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 it's only the, ah, okay, put the bull, bye, okay, one time in three months, come, no, no, it's work for the. Yes, for the people come to see the bull, eh, eh, the people, in the plate, I make a one special plate for, create a hashtag for the people come to photo, or the tourists. You make tourist.
Es una atracción.
Tourism, turismo, is good for the village, tourism is good for the village.
So, I, I think that the board is a little asking all these questions because we've never done this before.
I know.
And this would be our first one, and we would also then want to offer this to other people if we decided to allow you to do it. And this one is a very, you know, flashy, large, for the first one. So, I think that's why everyone's asking a lot of questions and there's a little hesitation, so.
My hesitation is just in August, where we're so saturated already, I don't know if we wanna bring more people into the village, and where do they park?
Well, it wouldn't be for August, because if it were to start soon, it'd be gone in a couple of months, so.
It's gonna be from.
Wouldn't be here for next August.
Right, but this August.
August is already done.
They can't get in before Labor Day.
Oh, I thought they were.
Well, we wanted it, we wanted it sooner than later, because, right, we want the, the summer crowd to see it too, you know, and I don't think it's either go big or go home, I think having a bull startup would create more buzz for other artists that are like, known to come, and local artists that would wanna do the exposition.
The beginning for the local artist, see, oh my God, look this. Who is the artist? Ah, Enrique Cabrera, wow.
I, I, I like the idea, I just, the location is where we have a little separation on, on the, where to put it. And thinking forward, after your sculpture, there's gonna be someone else, so we wanna pick the, the right place to display the art, because it'll be not just for you, but it'll be for future artists.
Yes, I.
If I may, the next few months coming up are gonna be pretty great for the art scene out here, because you also have the Hampton Film Festival, which takes place primarily in the East Hampton Village.
True.
Because of Bill Paul and then United Artists. And you can kind of think of it as far to address your concern of additional foot traffic. You can also think of it kind of like the same way Sec Harbor thinks of Harbor Frost, or any of their things, you should put them in the shoulder seasons, uh, in the shoulder months of the, of the summer season.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I agree with Chris, I think if we approve this, it's, it'll be Labor Day weekend before it really goes in, that would be the.
Yes, with the unveiling, maybe in Labor Day.
Right.
Labor Day, or or, or, or.
Right before.
Como?
Right, just the weekend, right before Labor Day, we can.
Yes.
Labor Day.
Now is good time for, tomorrow, I think, you have the village's gala, special gala, okay? It's a, it's good time for the, maybe, exponerlo, o comentarlo, invitar a la gente, no?
Good time to expose it or to tell people to come and see it.
Tomorrow.
Uh, no, we're not putting it tomorrow just to announce it, like.
Oh, I see.
We choose a date or something.
Thing I'd say is, you know, there's always site prep work affiliated with the property.
Right.
Site preparation, so that's gonna take a little time too.
Okay, right.
I'm, I'm not Dave Collins.
Any, any, any legal issues that you see?
I, you know, public, there's always been public support for the arts in this country and in the state in particular. Talked about how you wanna proceed going forward, this would kind of be like a pilot project, just see how it works.
Right.
If it's appropriate, and if it works at all, and if it does, then we can set up, you know, and yeah, so like an appropriate selection committee or some process going forward for other people to submit and be with.
Nice.
Why wouldn't we do it before this, this election?
Cause now you're talking a year away.
Yeah.
But what's the urgency?
There's no urgency, but if we have it and it's not costing anybody and we can do this, it would open the door for more people to come by. It's like the beginning, a pilot program, it's not like he's more special than anybody else, it's like.
He approached us, yeah.
Approaches, we're trying to do this, get it done, and then everybody else can come, and whoever it approaches, more than welcome, so we can do it.
Yes, now is, is the perfect time for, the timing for what? For the bull is here, maybe the next month, the next week, I make a one with the Spain, okay, the bull, go to Spain. And, okay Enrique, okay, I need pay for thirty-five thousand dollars for the chip with the bull, you know? And, and it's the perfect time for all success around with the ANFA, the.
Did you show me the different locations?
I did, I haven't showed him gardeners, but we can, we can talk.
Yo creo que, porque no lo ponemos, yeah.
Spoke to the mayor about a possible location of art. The art, and we have right down the street, which.
Gardeners?
Yeah. Which might lend itself more to the art world, bring people there, there's parking lot, and also, even the getting it set up and breaking it down wouldn't be such a stress on the village.
Where is this?
Right off James Lane.
Let me just.
You know, the Gardner Mill Museum, between the, between the museum and the, and, and the windmill.
And would we ask the neighbors, will we get approval from them?
No, no.
He said in New York, when they placed it, they got approval from all those.
But this is an art installation and an art. Yeah.
No, I think that would just open up.
I didn't approve it with the village, the village is.
So, no, so, no, so, we're gonna make a decision and we're gonna let you know.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, and, and the most important in all projects is the history in the beginning. And the bull, I have a great history, and I, I am happy with the East Hampton, it's part with a great history, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Ciao.
Thank you.
So, that's one of the locations we can look into, um, the gardeners, or the other location that we were looking at?
Yeah, I looked at Village Hall, and the, the size of this was sixteen feet by seven feet by seven feet, I think Village Hall would be. It would be a little overwhelming, I think, there.
And the parking.
And the parking.
And if it did attract a lot of people, which it sounds like it will, I don't know if we want that kind of foot traffic or Village Hall.
Well, plus, it'll also bring, if you put it up at the gardener, it'll bring more attention to the museum.
Yes, I think.
I don't know.
I have a photo with the lights, you can see.
What's that?
With the lights?
Yeah, yeah, step up, you can just show the.
Trustees.
Show the trustees, that'd be great.
The lights in my. This one is for reflection, no?
And that's the bull, right, that's it?
Yeah.
Did you see?
It's very, very cool.
Sandra, I would also offer the park itself near Newtown Lane. I mean, we can handle the traffic better, if this is really gonna bring a certain amount of people, and then we don't have to worry about the residents near.
My only fear in the park is that the kids see it as a toy and start jumping on it, but if that's a location we want, you know.
What's gonna prevent someone from jumping on it?
On a museum? If you have a museum, museum, it looks more art.
Yeah.
Nobody's gonna jump on it, but if you have it next to a playground, well, it gives the impression. That's the only, that was my only.
Near an art museum might be a little bit more hands-off rather than in the middle of the park.
Exactly. I think we should give it a go and just determine the location, I think gardeners would be a better location at this time, and just to start there.
Yeah, I, I like the idea, at the gardeners.
I like that, I like that better than Village Hall.
Okay.
No, I don't like that. I, I think, I, I like the idea of art, and, you know, my family grew up in the art world, art business, but I feel like just us hastily picking an artist and putting it in the village right now, when there's so much already contention about all the things we're adding to the village, I think it needs to be thoughtful, and I think there should be a committee to select it in a process, rather than just put in one. I mean, I wish she was still here, cause I wanted to ask her, in the past, there's been an artist, how they've done things like that, we do have a great history of artists, and I, and I mean, I think this is a beautiful piece, but I I think if we put it right where you're suggesting, I think we'll get a lot of pushback.
Sir?
I, I agree with Carrie, I, I feel, I totally support the arts, I think this is a wonderful idea, I just, I'm not sure if the, the timing is right. I like the idea of the shoulder season, like September, October. For me, I just, I don't know why, what, I don't wanna attract more people to East Hampton, right, in August, I mean, you can barely get to the.
Well, this wouldn't be, it wouldn't be in August, it would start at the very end of August, and by any, by the time anybody knew about it, we'd be into September.
I'd like to go over to the, the museum and look at the property and see which houses will be looking onto that.
It's, it's just, do you have a cemetery in the front, you have a museum to the side, a windmill, it's plain grass, nobody's gonna be bothered about it. I think we should give it a go, it's a pilot program. It's plain grass, nobody's going to be bothered about it. I think we should give it a go, uh, it's a pilot program.
Houses there, so you have Billy Gardner's house, Layla Strauss's
It's not like it's right next to the house and we have events all the time in that museum. There's parking in the museum. It's not like it's gonna affect anybody.
And if it's between the museum and the windmill
Exactly.
It's kind of blocked from
By both of them. And it's not like it has huge lightning, it's just a silhouette lightning, or we can take away the light. But the windmill has light and no one is, um, saying nothing about it, so I think we should go ahead.
Because they bought the house when the windmill was there.
The windmill's lights are new. We just did that, those blue lights.
Yeah.
Are we voting on this right now?
Well, no, we're talking about it right now, but
Okay.
Okay.
And Harrow Park is not an option?
I don't think it's a good option because putting, uh, something like that next to a playground would give the impression it's another toy. And it would be, you know, kids can get hurt, something can happen. I think art should be in a museum.
Could you come back up? I just got a question for you. In the city, is it, in the meatpacking district, is it surrounded by anything to keep people away or off of it?
En el, en esta ciudad tienes algo que, eh, como que lo proteja para que la gente no esté pegándose a él, o la gente puede tocarlo?
No, no, the most important for me is the people take the piece, the, the, this
Que la gente lo toca, que lo sienta.
Our fear about the park, if kids were
Nuestro miedo de ponerlo Ellos quieren ponerlo en el parque, mi miedo del parque es que alguien venga, lo toque, se monte en él, haga algo, lo dañe, este
No le pasa nada.
Tú crees que no? He says it doesn't happen nothing, so a ti no te molestaría ponerlo en el parque?
No, nada.
No sé, no se rompe.
There's no houses, there's no, people drive by, I think it'll be cool.
I am happy with the people stop, take the car and touch.
Ask them what happens if somebody spray paints it or
Yes, this is the intention, the people
Just ask them, yeah.
Okay, y qué pasa, qué pasa si alguien le pone spray paint porque dicen que pasó hace poco, se no sé.
Se quita.
Se quita, se limpia, es cuento.
I am restored. I am, I, sorry, I make the most important
I just want to be careful, you know, and when your art piece being ruined.
No problem, the pieces, all, all times, eh, many, una granizada, a lo mejor, no pasa nada.
Discuss Harrow Park.
El, eh, tuviste el parque, di, di
Si, I like it.
Te gustaría en el parque?
El mejor lugar va a ser que todos decidamos.
Okay, I mean, the best place is
As a pilot program?
Again, I want to say that I, I, I don't, I think this process, I, I don't know this is like trustees deciding our, you know, we have DRBs and things like that.
Not on public, not on our property.
Well, I, I mean, I feel like, I would, I, I, I appreciate the offer and I think it's a great opportunity. I wish there was more of a process, a little
But I think this is the process. That's what we're talking about.
We're starting a new thing.
This is the process.
We are the process.
Yes, no, no, it's for sale. It's, I, I Yes.
Maybe going forward, we can have some sort of
Always in the park, yeah. And then we, like, like the attorney was saying, that this is a pilot program. And then we set up a application process where people can, and
Sandra, can you ask it for any
Sarah, can you live with the park?
I, I would feel more comfortable with it at the park. I, I just
Say it again?
I, I would feel more comfortable with it in the park.
Yeah, me too.
Um, I feel like that's, you know, it, it's a gigantic space. There's no one that's going to be looking out on it. And, and I think it's a beautiful piece, but art is very subjective, so
Sorry.
Okay.
No, no, it's one for whoever, Carrie. I, I like you in the park.
So I think the park is a good idea.
It's more open for all people walking
Parking, people can walk through, they can sit, they can look at it.
And we have events in the park, it'll draw a lot of people, yes.
The windmill, I, I understand that it's museum, I just feel like it's
Lighting's not a problem.
The, the park is nice, but I, I, my intention was a, a great confusion with the windmill, the bull, and no, 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 it's, it's the, the windmill, it's
All right.
There's, there's maybe, and the park is the best option.
So everybody can live with the park.
Okay, solo, I'm
Park it is.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much. So thank you. Only make the timing, no?
Te quería preguntar si hay este algo que sea, este, o como este esquina, que sea algo peligroso, si alguien viene, un niño, algo, se puede hacer daño con el toro?
No, realmente no, o sea, bueno, te puedes hacer daño con este microfono, no.
Okay.
No, but, eh
If someone climbs on it, is that a problem, like?
That, that, that's something.
I told you. I just want to make sure. Because if there's a pole, someone's going to climb on it.
Understood.
Estamos viendo cómo, si alguien esté trepa, se monta en el toro o algo, estamos tratando de ver cómo puede evitar.
En la placa, I make, in the, in the base, I make a one, eh, special plate. Please no
Okay.
Not take for your house my bull.
Algo de esto, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So trusting everybody with the installation.
All right. I do take what paid before at the village.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You don't have to stay for the rest, it's all. Thank you. All right. Congratulations. All right, so, uh, public comment, anybody here would like to speak?